Started then. So pursuant to section eighty-four, fourteen-eleven of the Nebraska statutes, notice of this meeting was previously given in the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two OSERS meeting schedule adopted in June of two thousand twenty-one. Pursuant to section eighty-four, fourteen-eleven of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Trustees will be held Thursday, March third, two thousand twenty-two, at four P. M. in the Board Conference Room, second floor at the Teacher Administrative Center, thirty-two fifteen Coming Street here in Omaha. However, please note, there will be a discussion at this meeting regarding future transition board meetings. As such, the schedule may change. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Retirement Office at the Teacher Administrative Center during regular working hours. Pursuant to section eighty-four, fourteen-twelve of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Board of Education Meeting Room on the North Wall. With that, Cecilia, would you call the roll, please?
Born.
Here.
Block is excused. Erdnberger.
Here.
Head is excused. Hersonbach excused. Johnson.
Here.
And Mr. Ray is sitting in for Dr. Logan. Mr. Ray?
Here.
For present.
Okay, thank you. We'll jump down to Agenda Item Two, Discussion and/or Potential Action on OSERS Policy and Regulations/Revisions. So if you recall, as part of our compliance audit, Ice Miller reviewed the rules and regulations adopted in July twenty-one by the Board of Education. And in order to keep the plan compliant, Ice Miller has made recommendations to those rules and regulations. We're gonna have Cecilia go over some of the highlights, and then we'll talk a little bit about a recommendation that the Transition Board would have regarding the pursuit of a determination letter, what we've talked about before. So Cecilia, would you talk a little bit about the status of the compliance audit?
Okay, the compliance audit was completed, and part of the compliance audit was a review of the rules and regulations. Some of the changes that were in your package were more style language, but there were about six practical changes to the rules and regulations worth noting. One that we'll talk about is ineligible contribution. So there could be an occasion where an employee payroll has made a contribution to the OSERS plan that is not actually eligible for as a contribution as part of pension compensation. And under those circumstances, and they're very, very rare, I think one other example would be someone has made a contribution, and then they go to retire, and those years of service that they bought in are not eligible to be counted towards retirement under the statute. Any employee contribution that is ineligible or an excess contribution must be returned to the employee. And if the contribution is being returned in the same calendar year that the employee has made the contribution, the employee will receive a W-two. If the monies are returned in a subsequent calendar year, the monies are reported on a ten ninety-nine R. We cannot just leave the monies in the plan. Conversely, if the employer, for some reason, makes an excess contribution, the excess amount is credited to future employee contributions. Excuse me, to future employer contributions. So that was worth noting, that they delineated it and explained it in the rules and regulations. Next part is refund and termination of benefits. So a refund or termination, we all know that we do not permit in-service withdrawals. Therefore, an employee must have a bona fide separation to avoid an in-service withdrawal transaction. The OSERS plan does not permit any type of in-service withdrawal, i.e. hardship withdrawal or a loan. So therefore, we have to make sure that the person has truly separated from employment with OPS. And so now, with the new requirement that went into effect in July, that the person leaving OPS and requesting a distribution must wait at least four months before their distribution can be processed, ensures that we have a bona fide separation. Next, Chapter Four, the discussion on required minimum distributions. Our language had always been that we follow required minimum distributions in accordance with IRS rules. But in light of the fact that we do want to look in the future to submit for a determination letter, Ice Miller actually broke out all the rules and regulations regarding required minimum distributions. There are, let's see, employees, former members who are not, and these are to employees who are not receiving a monthly pension plan and are over age seventy-and-a-half or seventy-two, depending on when they were born. The distribution to these members are subject to minimum distribution rules. Therefore, which we were doing before, if a person did not vest into the OSERS plan and instead elected to take a distribution of their employee contributions, and they were over age seventy-and-a-half, all of their money was not eligible for rollover, so we have to break it out. And so this just explains for staff and the public why they're not eligible to receive these monies as a rollover. We're working on a project, which I'll talk about a little bit later, and we have fifteen members who are non-vested with money still in the plan, who are over age seventy-and-a-half. And so we are working on trying to find them and, you know, help them to take their money out of the plan. The next topic was Chapter Six, Missing and Unresponsive Members and Beneficiaries, so distributing unclaimed benefits. The, you know, there was a belief that the pension funds should be turned over to the state treasurer for missing participants, but Ice Miller went through and actually explained out that the funds are part of a trust for the exclusive benefit of the members and their beneficiary. So any unclaimed benefits are forfeited back to the plan, and even if we write them off, they must be reinstated if the member or their beneficiary or their family comes forth later to make claim for that abandoned benefit. Next was Chapter eleven, Purchase of Service Credit, Out-of-State Service. This section, they actually went through the language to help define what out-of-state service means for our plan, which has become, sometimes has been, become problematic for new employees coming from private educational institutions. So this actually explains it out and defines what the state statute defines as out-of-state Because as you know, coming from a private school is not public school service, and not from a school district is the true term. Payment Methods, Paragraph six of Chapter eleven. The district adopted a policy that OSERS members who are making installments or payments into the plan for the purchase of service or to buy back service must make the payment with a cashier's check, a bank draft, or a money order. Well, there are small, some occasions where if the payment is not made by a certain date, it begins to accrue interest. So a person may come in, and they have the money order or the cashier's check for the specific amount, but because they are three weeks later than the defined date, interest has accrued, and they'll owe more money. Under those circumstances, if the accrued interest is less than a hundred dollars, we will take a personal check. And so we just defined that. And then finally, Administration of Internal Revenue Service Code, Section four fifteen, and maximum compensation limits. OSERS membership historically has not had to concern itself with the Section four fifteen limits, but that is no longer true. There are limits on compensation towards making employee contributions, and there are limits on permissible annual pension benefits. And we now have individual members who are close to or above the limits, and these individuals are monitored to ensure the limits are not violated. We also have instituted a monitoring tool for staff to use to alert me when a calculation is coming close to the limit, and then I can have that looked at either by the actuary or doing research myself. But again, because we're looking to go for a determination letter, this is all laid out and defined in the rules and regulations. So those were the six highlights of the revisions that will be presented to the Board of Education.
So Cecilia, when those items are complete, then every recommendation from Ice Miller will be resolved or updated or adopted?
Yes. These revisions will go to the Board of Education Policy Committee for them to review, to be presented, and then the Policy Committee will recommend to the Board of Education to adopt the revisions, at which point, after it's adopted by the Board of Education, then I will make sure that the OSERS Transition Board gets a copy. Of course, OSERS staff will have the updated copy, and will post a copy to our website.
Okay, so then, so there's nothing, everything's in flight, and there's nothing the Transition Board needs to do then?
No, this was informational, so they know, so the Board knows what's going on.
All right, fantastic. Any questions for Cecilia? Okay, seeing none. We do wanna talk real quickly about the determination letter. Actually, Cecilia, why don't you kinda give the background on Ice Miller recommending that as well?
Ice Miller did recommend that the Board of Education submit for a determination letter. It is going to be a topic presented to the Board of Education. It is basically a means of just ensuring that as of that moment, the plan is compliant as we go through the process of transitioning to, transitioning the administration of OSERS to the Nebraska Public Employees Retirement System.
Okay, so I'm assuming that OPS, the Board will, is going to ask for that? Is it, so Jane's, okay. So I'm not gonna do a motion, or we're not gonna do a motion or anything, 'cause that's well in hand, so. Okay, is there anything else on the policy regulations and revisions, Cecilia?
Nope, that is it.
I was just gonna clarify, I think the plan is for the determination letter to be sent by Ice Miller to the IRS as soon as the rules and regs are adopted by the Board, so by the end of the month, I believe. Is that right, Megan?
So the plan, there'll be a resolution in addition, so there'll be three items, as I understand it, on the Board of Education's agenda, assuming that the policies come out of the Policy Committee, so there'd be the policies recommendation. There's going to be the experience study, which we talk about later tonight. And then, in addition to that, there'll be a resolution recommending, they seek, once those things are adopted, that we seek a determination letter from the IRS. And I think there's one more thing that they're recommending, I feel like it's something else, but both of those things will be included in them.
So we've got the experience number, the rules and regs, and the determination letter?
Correct.
While you're up there, I guess I just, to fill in the board, oh shoot, I had another, oh yeah. Apparently, we are under the impression that some of the changes we're making to our rules and regs probably also need to be made to other pension plans in the state of Nebraska.
Yes, to EMPERS as well, and there is, as you recall, L.B. one forty-four was introduced as a shell bill for a classified retirement plan. It also will be amended likely. There are gonna be two statutory changes. One being that there is no longer, the term ARC is no longer a term under GASP rules, it should be ADC. I can't remember what the D stands for.
Actually, Determined Contribution.
Determined, there you go. So that would be one of the two recommendations, and then the other additional recommendation is that because of the State Claims Property Act, there, you know, is some concern with the exclusive benefit rule of sending those additional dollars directly over to state rather than withholding them within the trust. And so that piece will also be updated as part, not only for us, while we don't have a specific statutory reference, we wanna make sure that we don't, in adopting our policies and regulations, aren't required to send money from our trust over to the state treasurer. And so that'll be another piece, that'll be part of that discussion as well.
Bottom line, the state plans are getting the benefit of our compliance audit.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
But Scott says he doesn't think we can charge them.
And I believe in L.B. seven hundred, which was introduced yesterday, they introduced another compliance audit with the state as well, and that's for EMPERS, not for OSERS.
I'm sorry?
L.B. seven hundred got introduced yesterday as a retirement bill, and it's requiring the state to do a compliance audit as well.
Of us?
Of the state of Nebraska EMPERS.
Oh, of EMPERS, okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Megan. So again, the only reason we brought this up is just to, you know, assisting transitions to make sure we don't drop any balls, so I appreciate it. And hats off to the staff and Ice Miller and everybody that's worked on the compliance. As you recall, we hadn't done one of those, I think, ever, and so it's certainly gone pretty smoothly, so, okay, thank you. We'll jump down to Discussion Item Number Three, Action and/or Adoption of Assumptions from the two thousand twenty-one Experience Study. You recall, we've had some actuarial presentations to us. We formed that subcommittee with, it was Jane, let's see, Spencer, Cecilia, Dr. Logan, Matt, I believe, and anyway, so Scott Roberts, so Omaha Public School CFO, is here to present the district's position or recommendation on adopting the assumption changes. So with that, I think Scott's got a presentation, and we'll go from there. Welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate being here this afternoon and appreciate your time. A couple of things I'd like to kinda run through on the agenda here. First of all, to walk through what's transpired over the last three months since Kavanaugh McDonald issued their draft findings. We'll talk about the factors that were considered in the recommendation, the options that were evaluated, and then the recommendation itself. So as a reminder, Kavanaugh McDonald was here on October seventh. They made some recommendations in a rather lengthy presentation, a comprehensive presentation of the work that they had performed. As a reminder, any changes that we adopt are effective this year, they'd be effective for our January one valuation, which for the school district is the fiscal year that ends August thirty-first of this year. So I wanna be cognizant of that. The economic assumptions are varied, as you can see in the second bullet, investment return, price inflation, wage growth, COLAs, et cetera. I will tell you that excluding the investment return, collectively, all the other assumption changes have no meaningful impact on the long-term financial implications in the plan. The investment return itself has the most dramatic impact on the required annual contribution, the additional contribution the district makes, as well as the future contributions within the plan. Cavmax' initial report only had two recommendations. The first was make all of the changes in one year, which would be this fiscal year. The second would be accelerating a four-year cycle used by EMPERS to a concentrated or accelerated three-year plan. In late October, I asked Kavanaugh McDonald to model two additional plans. EMPERS is following a four-year phasing, so I asked them to do two versions of four-year phasing to mirror kind of the approach that they're taking. These two additional options, both are over a four-year phasing, if you will. The first one has slightly more change to the investment return in the first year. The second option has a bigger change in the final year. All four options were then reviewed by district leadership, a subcommittee of the Board of Education, and the committee, the subcommittee of the Board, then reviewed those on December seventeenth and have agreed to the recommendation that's being made here this evening. Couple of factors that were considered, first and foremost, the long-term health of the plan is paramount in anything that we do. Currently, the plan is expected to be fully funded in the year two thousand forty-nine. All of the options that we considered have the plan fully funded in two thousand forty-nine. There was a desire to ensure that we don't elongate the period of time it takes to fund the plan, and so that was first and foremost a primary consideration. Secondly, as best we can, we wanna do what EMPERS is doing. If EMPERS is phasing their changes in over four years, we think it's prudent that OSERS be doing the exact same. The phasing may be a little bit different, but the period of time should mirror itself. And then the end goal is that EMPERS and OSERS, whatever those end rates are, in this case for the investment return, it's seven percent, that both plans end up at seven percent in the first year of transition. The financial considerations are principally focused on the district. So we're in the middle of this year, and as I indicated, any changes that are adopted as a result of this experience study are gonna impact the financials for the district in this fiscal year. Our budget has been fully allocated, so any significant change in the ARC will result, quite honestly, depending on its materiality, will result in really immediate budget cuts in our fiscal year to ensure that we have the funding. We are at our spending authority limit with the state, so we do not have an ability to amend our budget this year to create room for additional payments, so we will have to make that work within the existing budget. The other consideration is over the next couple of years, obviously, the ARC change as a result of lowering the investment return is gonna increase fairly significantly. The district will be opening four new schools in the next fiscal year, and then a fifth school the year following. The estimated costs of doing that are about forty million dollars of operating costs in the first year for those five schools. So making room for the additional pension payments has to be taken into account in addition to the increased costs that we're gonna have for those schools. And then the timing of the changes, as I mentioned just a minute ago, it's important that we all kinda cross the finish line together. So EMPERS and OSERS getting to the same endpoint rates at the same time was a consideration and something that we considered very important. So the options that were considered, there was four of them, as I mentioned earlier. The first one is phasing in all of the changes in the first year, and I'm gonna show you some detailed numbers on the next page, so bear with me for just a minute. There's really no requirement to make those changes all at one time. EMPERS, as I indicated, is phasing in over four years. This option in particular would increase the estimated ARC by eight-point-four million this year and twenty-five-point-four million over the next three years. So as you can see, it's fairly significant. Option two is that accelerated three-year phasing, and the reason for kinda the acceleration, if you will, or I can understand where Kavanaugh McDonald was, EMPERS valuation is as of July first every year. OSERS is as of January first. So EMPERS has already done their year one, so the accelerated three-year actually gets us caught up, does two years in the first year, and actually puts us six months ahead of where EMPERS is. But that impacts almost four-and-a-half million for this year, and just under twenty million over three years. The two additional options that I asked Kavanaugh McDonald to model are noted in Options Three and Four. The first one has a slightly larger change to the investment return in year one, and that would increase the estimated ARC by two-point-seven million or fifteen million over three years. The fourth option is almost a mirror image of that, that bigger change is in the final year, the fourth year, and that would be a four-hundred-thousand-dollar change, which is really negligible in this year, and eight-point-three million over the next three years. On the next page is just a quick comparison. This is the investment return and the estimated ARC only, but all five options, if you will, current state, the four options that I just reviewed, as well as what EMPERS is doing, are all noted on one page. There's really not much to talk about here in more detail. I've covered the numbers on the previous page, but we can double back during the Q. and A, and if you want me to dig into any of this in a little bit more detail, I'd be happy to do that. So the recommendation is Option Four. We feel like this is the best balanced option. Once again, it ensures that the long-term stability of the plan and the fully funded period does not change or get extended. It also balances the economic needs and the reality of where the district is for the next three budget cycles. And as you can see in the final columns with the red boxes around them, we end up in the exact same place that EMPERS is on all the economic assumptions. And I only listed four major ones here, there's some COLAs and some other things, but we're ultimately getting to the exact same endpoint on every single assumption, really with one exception. I believe there's a slightly different COLA number for EMPERS for folks prior to, I think it was twenty-seventeen. They're slightly higher, I believe, than OSERS is. Other than that, we get to the same place at the same time. And then the last page is really just the rationale, and I wanna cover this with you fairly quickly. The first bullet is a quote from Kavanaugh McDonald's information that they sent with the two revised options, and I'd like to read it to you. The system is expected to reach hundred percent funding in January two thousand forty-nine valuation, regardless of which option is selected. And I think that's an important consideration. Additionally, the option results in the investment return still reaching seven percent in January of twenty-five, and they feel that that's reasonable and will smooth the impact of the assumption change on the additional contributions required by the district. The, while the ARC's going up fairly significantly over three years in that option, it's eight-point-three million dollars, it at least allows the district time to plan through the budget cycle, the impacts on years two and three and the years beyond. We typically, in conjunction with our annual budget, do a five-year plan as well, and we start planning well in advance. So this would give us, if you will, a little runway to try to plan for those additional costs that'll be coming in at the same time those new schools are coming online. And then, once again, EMPERS is a four-year phasing, we feel it's fair that OSERS follows suit. So this balanced approach really, I think, satisfies both needs, the needs of the plan and the fiscal requirements or constraints that may exist within the district. With that said, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
So before I open it up for questions, I'd like to say a couple things. So, you know, if the Board wasn't in a, if it wasn't a transition board, I would, I would find a way, or we would pursue changing our actuarial study timing so that it would fit in with your budget, 'cause that just makes sense, right? But, you know, given where we are with the transition, that probably doesn't make sense to do that, but just for, so everybody knows, we would, you know, I do believe strongly that OSERS and the OPS Board and the district should be working together on stuff like this, and so, but for the transition, I would urge us or push us to change the timing of that, but there's really no need to do that. That being said, I think this is exactly how it should work. I mean, the subcommittee went to work and, you know, worked with the district, and it's a great outcome, it's clear that Kavanaugh McDonald agrees with it, the district agrees with it, you know, it's making the fund whole, and again, I think this is how this should work, to be quite honest. So, nice work, thank you. Any questions from the committee? So I guess what we're gonna look for...
I just have one question. This recommendation and these changes really only matter in the confines of our two systems. EMPERS doesn't care unless, all they're looking for is for us to be at seven percent, right?
Correct, that is correct.
So we could stay, we could do whatever we wanted to, as long as we ended up down there, okay? So they don't care that we're doing it slow to begin with and faster at the end?
No, it shouldn't have any impact on what they're doing. In fact, the arrows, tried to give you a graphic, and I didn't do a very good job, but their final year is as of July of twenty-four. We transition in September of twenty-four, and then January of twenty-five is our final change. So effectively, the first year that EMPERS is gonna have control of the plan will be at the exact same spot, which I think is where they would be primarily concerned.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Scott? All right, seeing none. Look for a motion to recommend the proposed, recommend the proposed recommendations to the Omaha Public School Board.
I move that we recommend the proposed recommendation to the school board.
Any further discussion? Cecilia?
Erwin Berger.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Ray.
Aye.
And Born.
Yes.
Four ayes.
All right, is adopted. Again, thank you, Scott and the subcommittee, good work, I think. Okay, so jumping down to agenda item number four, we'll have Cecilia talk a little bit about any action or potential action on the transition of OSERS to EMPERS in 2024. Cecilia?
Okay, and again, an update on the compliance audit. The actual compliance audit was filed with the Clerk of the Legislature on November 14th, and can be found on the Nebraska Legislature website under Reports. ICE Miller, represented by Robert Gauss, presented the OSERS compliance audit to the Retirement Committee the afternoon of December 8th at a hearing. There were a few questions from the Retirement Committee senators who were present, and Senator Coltman and the committee accepted the report. OSERS, OPS, and EMPERS continue to have monthly meetings with EMPERS, we've been doing it via WebEx. If you recall, LB 147 also required for a work plan to be filed with the Clerk of the Legislature by December 31st, and this work plan was to outline the steps that were necessary in the process by which to transition the administration of OSERS over to EMPERS. This work plan was completed and filed with the Clerk of the Legislature on December 23rd. It too can be found on the Nebraska Legislature website under Reports. You also received a full copy of it in your board package. It was pretty detailed, but the highlights are, at this point, the important highlights are, that the organizational structure of the project has been identified, and the projected timeline is outlined, and as we progress through, I will keep the Transition Board updated at our meetings. So EMPERS is the executive sponsor in, excuse me, yes, EMPERS is the executive sponsor in charge of the transition, so. That ends the update on the transition.
Okay, any questions for Cecilia on the transition? Seeing none? We'll next talk about the 2022 meeting schedule. We've had some discussions about this, there's really not any need to meet on a monthly basis. Cecilia, you want to kind of give an update on...
So the thought was, since most of the actions are, that we normally approved, are now the responsibility of the Board of Education, and the Transition Board is responsible for the progression of the transition itself, that we at least start, for the rest of this year, quarterly meetings, so that the Transition Board knows what's going on, what has progressed, and if there's any assistance that the Transition Board needs to provide to help this move forward, they're fully aware and can participate in helping with this transition. So, meaning the next meeting would be March, June, September, and then December.
So if it's okay with the rest of the board, I think we'll just kind of do that, but, you know, ad hoc, so if there's nothing, if there's no need, then we won't, then we won't meet, we'll have them on the schedule just to have them there, a placeholder, to Cecilia's point. We do have the responsibility, I guess, with the, you know, to ensure the transition goes well, but we're not going to meet just to meet, so. I don't think we need any kind of motion or anything for that, it's just kind of, if that's okay, that's what we'll go ahead and do. Okay, excellent. Cecilia, would you jump into the Executive Director's report?
As an FYI, OSERS does have an open position for a retirement technician, we had one staff person choose to move to another department. The position is being advertised as term limited, that is noted on the job description, which is posted on the OPS Careers Board. It is also noted in the job description that the person would be permitted to apply for another position in OPS in 2024. So even though they're coming into a term limited position, they are eligible to apply for another position at the end of the project. So the ideal candidate would be someone with a keen attention to details, and as I put it, not afraid of numbers, and must be respectful of confidentiality. So a retiree or someone wanting to just change position for a couple of years. The closing deadline on the position is January 14th, so more details in March on where we are on that. We have four significant projects underway this month, underway for the months of January and February. So January is 1099 R and 1099 miscellaneous mailings to retirees or former employees who elected to take a refund out of the OSERS plan, and the 1099 miscellaneouses go to vendors who have been paid by OSERS. We have reviewed, we've done an initial review of the 1099 Rs and miscellaneouses. OPS Accounting is giving me one more look, and then 1099 Rs will be mailed out by the, by January 31st, that is the IRS deadline. We're also working on a project with OPS, with the accounting department, because the IRS has revised Form W-4P, which is the form used by anyone in payment status of a pension plan to elect their federal withholdings. The form is much more complex, it's actually two, it's two pages now, in, these are my words, it is a bit intrusive. It is asking retirees to disclose all their retirement income. The form was supposed to go back into, was supposed to go into effect January 26th, January of 2022, but the retirement community industry pushback on the legal live date is now January 2023. This new reporting will require the payer to do additional reporting as well. So we are now, we, meaning OPS Accounting and I, are moving later this month to start looking over this form and try to work through what exactly is going to need to change in order to make sure that our W-4P is compliant. I mentioned a little bit earlier, required minimum distributions, so we have 15 former members who are not vested and had not requested a refund of the employee contributions, and they're now over 70 and a half years of age. So we are going to do a special mailing to these individuals, outlining the RMD requirements and trying to get them to make application for a refund. We can't just send them the monies. And then finally, fiscal year 2021, August 31st Annual Membership Statements for people who are members of OSERS. It is scheduled, the data is scheduled to go to Print and Publications mid-January, and the, then Print and Publications will have a month to produce the statements and mail them out. We're shooting for around Presidents' Day, therefore, our members should expect to start receiving their 2021 Annual Membership Statements around the end of February. That ends the Executive Director Report.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Cecilia? Seeing none. Next agenda item is Board Committee Report, is there anything that members of the Transition Board want to share? All right, seeing none, we'll move to adjourn.
I'll second.
One favor?
We need the motion, you can't move.
I'll move to adjourn.
I'll second.
There you go, we're good.
All right, we are adjourned, thank you.